Thank you for joining us for the Wednesday, December eighteenth Board of Education meeting. We are going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you do plan to make a public comment this evening, I would ask that you fill out a comment card and get it to Mrs. Calvert at this time. I would also ask that you silence your cell phones and remove your hats as we stand for the pleasure with us. All right, can we do the roll call, please, Mr. Calvert?
Amy.
Present.
Hansen.
Present.
Maker.
For the last time, present.
Bobby.
President.
Percy.
Present.
Reinerston.
Present.
And Luck.
Present. All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Then moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. All right, first up this evening, as always, are our board reports, and we will start with Elizabeth Story with our student board report.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so for the high school, principal, everyone, Christmas break is coming up soon. We just have tomorrow and then Friday, and we're done. So Student Leadership has asked, is actually holding a fundraiser where, like at lunch, they'll kind of have some of the students go down and do a fundraiser for Elle. And there was, like, I think teaching, I think they said calendars that they're selling, so people can get those and just to be able to support her. So their spirit week, I think, at all the schools, but at the high school, Monday was Snow PJ Day, Tuesday was Elle's Crazy Socks, Wednesday was Ugly Sweater Day, tomorrow is Holiday Day, but there's no hoods. And then Friday is going to be White Out. And then the cheerleaders wanted me to talk about their competition on Friday and how they said that they placed third out of the teams and that they had a really great time. So in NHS, we are still looking for opportunities, if anyone at all has any that I can talk about next, not next Tuesday, but when we go come back to school. If anyone has anything, that'd be great for me. At the middle school, yesterday, they had the choir concert. Today, there was the band and jazz band concert. And then tomorrow is then another band concert. And then the National Junior Honor Society had Symphony Care field trip. And I don't know what day that is, but I know that they have one coming up next. And then winter athletic season, like the Padre two kind of thing, like boys basketball will start January sixth. And then at Linden Elementary, there are a bunch of Christmas parties that are going to start happening. And they're going to do like breakfast and then just like, they're just like having all the sweetened kind of stuff. And then at Hyatt, they just finished almost all of their winter assessments and their pals sponsored the Santa shop that I kind of talked about a little bit. Apparently it was a really big success and that went really well. And then in holiday spirit has been fun for all of them. And then, oh, this is Hyatt, by the way, sorry for what I say, but they wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. And that is why I have to be here.
Thank you very much. I wish I would have realized it was Christmas sweater day because I actually had on a crazy Christmas sweater today at work and I changed because I didn't want to look like a lunatic, but I might have fit right in. It would have been perfect. It's all right, next time. All right, Russ, we'll turn things over to you for the superintendent report.
Yeah, thank you and welcome, everybody, this evening. A couple things to report on. As Lizzie mentioned, the last day for students and staff prior to the holiday break is Friday, December twenty, beginning of the twenty-third, Linden Community Schools will enclose until January sixth of two thousand and twenty, twenty-five, when students and staff will return. Pre-apprentice open house, so Linden High School is gearing up to kick off their pre-apprenticeship program when second semester begins on January twenty-one. Four students attended the pre-apprenticeship open house hosted by Niles Industry on December tenth. Partners from Niles Industry along with Mr. Dretzky, Heather Fuller, and Jay Kirk, connecting with students about the pre-apprenticeship path and future career opportunities. We are looking forward to the success of this program for our students. I would like to thank D Transportation for their two hundred and fifty dollar donation through their Christmas Wish for Kids program. The two hundred and fifty dollars will be deposited into our LCS Change for Kids account in the state bank, you can donate to that. This account is used to help students and our families in need. Mock Community College, Southern Lakes Campus, on December tenth, Linden High School Assistant Principal Mike Gates, Linden High School at Risk Council, Michelle Horning and I were invited to Mock Community College, Southern Lakes Campus. We were able to tour the LURDA building, which is a certified police training academy, and conversed with representatives from Mock Community College about strengthening our partnership for student success. This discussion topics included our early college program, dual enrollment, and eliminating barriers that would limit a student's interest in Mock Community College. Yeah, for about twenty-four hours on December sixteenth, Linden Community School was without power and internet access. It was determined that the pesky little squirrel had chewed part of our fiber in downtown Linden that runs from the GISD, GISD to Linden Community Schools. Luckily, the problem was identified quickly and the fiber fixed. Thank you to Chris Horstley, our tech director, for making this a priority and keeping our students and staff on track. And a big thank you, everyone, for the support of the Linden Community Schools faculty follies. Linden Community Schools raised over thirty-five hundred dollars for Angel Tree and Christmas Express. And finally, on behalf of Linden Community Schools, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much for us. Are there any board members with reports this evening? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Luck. I'd just like to echo Mr. Selsky's thanks for those who were able to attend the faculty follies and support our community. Our staff did a wonderful job again in putting on a great set of skits. And I was able to attend the seven o'clock show. Unfortunately, once again, we didn't come up with a board skit this year. We had people gone to the unusual conflict of having our Christmas County School Board dinner on the same night as follies. It generally doesn't happen that way, so next year, we will have a skit, I promise. But again, thanks to all the community for their support for Christmas Express and Angel Tree. Like I said, it's a good time for all to attend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to hold you to that promise, Mr. Murphy. We'll figure it out. Yes, Mr. Maker?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, thanks for select that, I believe, the rest of us were able to attend the Genesee County Association of School Board Members' annual dinner and fricking with, and that was a really good time. And one of the primary reasons was to recognize board members that are at the end of their term of service. So I'd like to thank Mr. Reinerston and, of course, Mr. Maker for his many years of service he was recognized there. And I also just wanted to thank you, Mr. Maker. I don't know if this is going to be the time, but that's not going to come out, it might be more time, but I'd just say with my four years here on the board, I've really learned a lot from you and look forward to hopefully still being able to continue to hear you call games for varsity basketball and football because we do love hearing that. So yeah, thanks, thanks for all your service, we appreciate it.
That's very good. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Maker? You're going to go right now?
I'll go right now.
You have another time, you have another chance. You can have two chances tonight if you want.
No, I need to, I need to go now and get this over with.
All right. Now you're messing up our plan.
That's okay, I got a role with this.
All right, it's your time, it's your time, go ahead.
So this portion of the meeting, I've always tried to ensure that my comments fit the intent of sharing relevant information with the rest of the board, our administrators, staff, students, parents, and community members that are in attendance. Tonight, I'm going to take some liberties with that, given that this is my last board meeting after sixteen and a half years. Got to keep this together. Just want to share some thoughts with all of you. Most of you know that I'm a man of few words, so please bear with me. First, for the community, thank you for your support, my candidacy for trustee on four occasions. My first run for trustee was preempted by my deployment to Iraq in two thousand and six. Otherwise, this would mark eighteen years on the board. On top of the support I have received, the community has always been a backing to the district in so many ways. In addition to villages, the bond, our staff and students receive so much backing from the public, our businesses, civic and service organizations. If you look at other districts, they identify as blank area schools or blank public schools. Without our great community, we just be limited schools. I'm proud to call this place home. The parent, parents of Linden, you're the X factor. It's great, as great as our staff is, I'll get to them in a minute, the overall success of our students starts on the you. We moved here with our family in two thousand and one from another district economy, primarily for the schools, and the most breaking thing for us from the start was parent involvement. Parent-teacher conferences are ninety-plus percent attendance, pals' participation, Linden Athletic and Band Boosters, our robotics program, I could go on and on. Our kids had more great opportunities because of you. And having been on that side myself, I'll challenge more parents to get involved because if you're not, the children being shortchanged are your own. To our students, what can I say? Eagles are a special group. I've attended so many events over the past years for academic and extracurricular activity, and I'm always amazed by your accomplishments and how you conduct yourselves. I'll preempt Mrs. Luck's comments in a few minutes, that the best part of any board meeting, that the best part of any board meeting is coming up, our student of the month recognitions. I know what makes Linden great and what brings us all to focus is our students. But it's more than academic and extracurricular achievement. You leave Linden ready for life's challenges and prepared to be good citizens. Our staff across all buildings and job functions are the best hands down. Our parents wouldn't be as committed, our students wouldn't flourish without professional nurturing and supportive administrators, teachers, office and support staff. My daughter, son, and niece are all Linden graduates. I look at them in adulthood and the success they've attained, and so much of that points back to all of you. I know our family, like hundreds of others, owe you a huge debt of gratitude. Over these past years, the Board of Education Administration made a lot of decisions, sometimes perceived negatively, but always with the best intentions of supporting the district, staff, and students. And in the end, things worked out favorably, often because you stepped up, committed to making it work. I'll call it a can-do attitude. I consider many of you my friends and old you in the highest regard. Our recording secretary, if you don't know, is like the navigator of the ship, keeping us on course during meetings and conducting board business. Ms. Shouse, I've known you since I came to Linden twenty-three years ago. And the lady Jensen before her are very much the hands of the board, assisting us as well as the superintendent and all behind the scenes admin details. I have so appreciated your assistance during my years as president and vice president, you have been invaluable. My fellow board members, who by now, by my count, stands at twenty, including those here at the table since two thousand and eight when I joined, you're some of the most dedicated, underappreciated members of our community. Your sacrifice of time and energy isn't beat discounted. Beyond scheduled meetings, you all attend special meetings, three districts meetings, GISD and County School Board Association meetings and events, MSB conferences and training, plus attending countless school and community activities. I have enjoyed these many years working with you, sometimes disagreeing, but always doing our parts to lead the district forward and making Linden schools the best. I'll miss your camaraderie and being here, serving the community alongside you. I'd be remiss if I didn't comment on our superintendents. Linden has been blessed during my tenure to have two of the best, most committed and professional administrators and visionary leaders. If you look at other schools, you'll see a lot of districts where that office has a revolving door. And there are many reasons, some I've spoken about already, the community, parents, students, staff, board members, as well as the sups themselves. We haven't had that problem here, and the results show. I was closely tied in hiring of both at Colino and Russ Selsky, whom luckily for us, they were high-quality internal candidates. They both faced numerous challenges, not unlike other districts, but they weathered the storm in each case, and we have benefited as a community from their commitment and the continuity of that office. I'm glad I've had such positive professional relationships with both of them and consider them as good friends personally. And finally, my family, when you dedicate yourself to serving others, there's a price to be paid. My military career, volunteer activities, and role as board trustee have consumed a lot of time, and they paid the price. But they were always the ones to encourage me and have been my staunchest supporters over these years. They've been reliable sounding board, voice of reason, and the whisper of consciousness in my ear. My grandmother always said, conduct yourself in a way that your that your family is proud of you. A big thank you to Jen, Morgan, and Colin for the support all these years. I finished my time here with a lot of pride on how our Linden Community Schools have come and what the future holds. Many families and students will benefit from what has evolved over the past sixteen and a half years, and there's much more to come. I'll see you around announcing football and basketball games. Go Eagles!
Thank you so much, Scott, and all of that well said. Mrs. St. Boxer's tissue is almost gone, so if anyone needs one, act fast. I have just a couple of things which I feel like I shouldn't even report on, but anyway, yes, we attended the holiday dinner, majority of us. Thank you to those who participated in the follies. Mr. Selsky and I had the opportunity last week to meet with our two incoming board members, Katie O'Dell and Tabitha Ramber, for some new board member onboarding, and that went really well. So we were thankful that they've already started taking on their role as well for our district, and we'll welcome them to the board in our first meeting in January. And then also thank you fellow board members for those that took the time to complete our board self-evaluation for this year. We had that as a discussion item later on in this meeting. And just to echo what everyone else has already said as well, happy holidays to everyone. I hope everyone has a relaxing, safe, and enjoyable break. And I was going to say this upon opening the meeting, but forgot. For those students that are here tonight, we'll try to keep the meeting under about three and a half hours. Because there's nowhere else you'd rather be to be before Christmas. All right. Yeah, that's supposed to be funny, the more you laugh, the quicker I move. Oh, all right, yeah, there we go. There we go. That's Mr. Maker's wife. We are out of here. All right.
She's hungry.
All right, very good. So we will move along now to the very best part of every board meeting, which is our special recognition, and we will start this evening with our student recognitions. First up, our Linden High School Student of the Month, who will be presented, I think, by Mr. Bennett and Mr. Dretzky are here, so we will turn things over to them.
And I was going to thank you for letting us hit leadoff, we could follow that. Before I bring in Mr. Bennett and our student of the month, I just want to offer my personal thanks for your service on behalf of myself and Linden High School, so thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Bennett will bring up our student of the month nominee and recipient, Mr. Luke Smalley.
Good evening, everybody. This is Luke Smalley. You know, as a, as a teacher who gets to work with students progressively over the years, you know, a lot of other classes don't have that ability. I get to see these students a lot of times starting middle school, and I get to see them progress as they go through, and I'll get them for five, four years, depending on, you know, how long they're inside of my program. And I can think of very few students that stand out even remotely close to this individual that's standing up here this evening. Just when I think of top tier, what represents Linden and Linden Community Schools, Luke is the epitome of that idea. I sent out a message to a couple of our, to all of the staff members, and a couple of our staff members wanted to share some of their thoughts on Luke. Dr. George, Luke is a powerhouse in AP English literature. I cannot imagine class without him. He confidently contributes to class discussion with insightful analysis, and he impresses everyone with his original ideas. He is motivated to grow as both a student and a person, and he truly deserves this honor. This is Shouse. Luke Smalley is an exceptional student. Not only does he work hard and perform well, but he also helps others by actively participating and leading other classmates in the process. Additionally, he is a kind and humble person. He is and will be an individual who will have an impact on his community. And Mr. Bodzik, I had the pleasure of having Luke in my AP Government class last year. Well, I'm amazing, sorry, awesome kid. Always prepared, always engaged, always polite, and wicked smart. I'm very happy he is receiving this honor. When I nominated Luke, these are the things that I started to discuss in the process. Luke is an amazing and dedicated student. He was one of our drum majors this past season. He was instrumental in helping the band prepare for state finals. He was always the first one there and the last to leave, and I do not exaggerate. He makes sure that if anything needs to get done, it gets done. He tutors students that are struggling in other classes regularly. And several students who are just seeming to struggle, whether it was with the actual class load, or maybe it was the emotional toll of having to juggle a schedule that's demanding, maybe it was, you know, just a particular class or a social situation. And Luke, not just this year, over the years, has been that student that has reached out and worked with other teachers and other students to tutor these students. In fact, last year, it's actually one of my favorite memories, after an incredibly, it was a long week, and it was like pitch black outside, the picnic table sitting right up in front of the admin building, and Luke and two other students are out there studying with that just little lamp post there and their phones, and they're just sitting out there, it's like, and they're the kind of students, and Luke is the kind of student who is going to find solutions and not excuses. On top of being, you know, an amazing student, he's an amazing musician. He is one of our four All-State musicians this year, which, to be an All-State musician, it is an incredible honor, equivalent to being an All-State athlete. He'll be performing at the state conference in January with world-renowned composer Randall Sandridge. He also made the MSBOA Honors Brass Ensemble because he had one of the highest scores in the state last year at Soul One Ensemble. He's performed at several honors bands, I'm sure I've been a missed one, but Western, Oakland, Eastern Michigan, District Three Honors Band, he just actually got into District Three Honors Band again as first chair. So he is actively working on improving his skills. He is an amazingly intelligent musician as far as composing and writing and understanding the complexity of music. He wrote one of our stand tunes for the Marchy Bend season. He arranges music for and leads a brass band, which is a completely student-run group that's going to be performing here in a little bit down at the middle school. And he leads that group and does a phenomenal job with that. He is generous with his time, always goes above and beyond the call of duty. His personality is incredibly positive, you know, I rarely hear him say something negative. And as a high school student and as a young adult, and frankly, just as an adult, that is not something that you hear often, somebody that is even keel with life and looks towards the positive and keeps things moving forward instead of wallowing in, you know, the speed bumps along the way. I can tell you without doubt that the other students looked up to him as a role model, even though he's incredibly successful in the things he does, it's because he works hard and he is humble about it, and the students see that in him every single day. My students know that I very often focus on the fact that while we do bands and we do music, it's not always about that. In fact, that is not my focus. My focus is on creating good people that do good things in the world. We use music to get to that point where we feel comfortable that they're going to go off into the world and contribute. I also discuss with my students that there are two types of people in the world, people that make your life harder and people that make your life easier. Luke is, without a doubt, the person who's going to make your life easier. He's going to be a huge contribution to any community and any environment that he's in moving forward, and I wish him the best of luck, and we're just so excited to hear what he does in the future.
Luke, congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education. I'm not usually a loss for words, but after all the wonderful things Mr. Bennett has said, I kept thinking, what else can I say? Like, that's amazing, so keep up the good work. All right, up next, we will have the Linden Middle School Student of the Month, so Mr. Enders and Mrs. Strong are here, I think, to present the student of the month.
Thank you, good evening. First off, congratulations to all the students of the month, it's a great honor to see all the smiling faces and hear all the wonderful things that are said. Thank you, board, for giving us the opportunity to come up here and talk so highly of all our students. Mr. Makers? Thank you, it's been, it's been a fun ride. So I'd like to introduce Mrs. Strong and our student of the month, Cheyenne Jerome. We're going to talk about her a little bit, we've got some funny stories, but I don't know if they'll come out, but a lot of great things. She's a wonderful young lady, and we're happy to have her at Linden Middle School.
All right, thank you, good evening. I am honored to recognize a truly exceptional student, Cheyenne Jerome. She has consistently demonstrated a strong work ethic, a kind heart, and a bright mind. In my seventh grade social studies classroom, Cheyenne is an active participant. I mean, she not only listens attentively, but is always willing to add insights to our class discussions, ask questions when needed for clarification, showing genuine curiosity and a desire to learn. But what truly sets Cheyenne apart, what truly sets her apart is her compassion and her willingness to help others. She has a keen eye for any struggling peer. I watched her in the classroom, it was during the stations activity, right, with ancient Egypt, and I watched her just go up to a struggling student that she, she had that keen eye to observe, and follow him around the stations and help them out. And I witnessed that, like, I mean, you, you don't realize, I don't think, what it did for that student. I saw him light up and you helped him. Again, it was earlier this week, I think it was Monday, a student, I have her seventh hour, so it was during dismissal time, you know, their, their eyes adore. And a student dropped his books, she stopped without hesitation and helped him pick up his books, and I owe you a score ticket for that? Sorry, it was at the end of the day.
I'll hold you up till the end.
See? She also, you know, yeah, that's not bad. So, but these small acts of kindness speak volumes about Cheyenne and her heart. So she also demonstrates a strong act of, or a strong sense of self-advocacy. She's determined to succeed academically and is proactive and seeking opportunities to do that. Just today, they had, I gave a unit test for ancient Egypt. After that, I had a digital breakout, they could work together with friends, you know, something relaxing after a test. And she chose to, came up and asked me first, of course, is it okay if I work on an assignment for another class? Sure. I mean, that doesn't happen very often in middle school when they get a chance to do something for fun. So, I mean, she just is, she prioritizes her studies. So Cheyenne, your dedication, your kindness, your heart is an inspiration to all of us, your teachers. We, it was hands down when we were asked to nominate a student. We are incredibly proud of you, and we look forward to seeing all the things you accomplish. I know she has told me before, everyone thinks that I would be a good teacher, but, you know, tell me, what is it like to, and I would be so proud if you become a teacher because I think she would be so awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Cheyenne. I always mention to students of the month for the high school and the middle school that, you know, it's always an honor to be the student of the month, but when you're nominated by multiple teachers, like, from the whole nominated by multiple teachers, like, from the whole school, that really speaks highly. And also, we always hear a lot of words, not necessarily about your academics, we're sure that you're good academically as well, but just hearing about your personalities, your kindness, Mr. Bennett mentioned it about a High School Student of the Month as well, how he makes your life easier, you helping your peers, and just trying to make everyone's life better, keep doing that, thank you. And I like your personality, I can tell. And we'll miss Strong to that ticket, too. All right, very good. All right, we will move along next to Hyde Elementary. I think Mr. Strickert is here, and I saw Mrs. Rucker here as well, so you can present your Student of the Month.
Yes, indeed, thank you very much for having us here again. Again, Mr. Maker, thank you, for calling, and for the moment I stepped here, you feel welcome. When you're ready, I can stop by, check on things. You've always been that leader, exemplified it, which you expected from us as well, so we appreciate you, too. Mrs. Rucker, come on up with Victoria, and let's honor another awesome Hyde student. Congratulations.
All right, hi. So this is Victoria, and I have a paper. So I know I was going to be presenting at the December board meeting, so I've been thinking about who I wanted to choose to bring here, and I am fortunate enough this year to have a lovely group of children, and I could have chosen several, but as I was thinking about it, Victoria just had coffee in my head, and it was meant to be. And this is where I, people say, this is why I chose you, but it's not because you are so kind to other students, because you are, it's not because you read so well, and you can hear her read, she reads better than a lot of adults with lots of phrasing and expression, it's super sweet. I didn't choose you because when she was in first grade, she was at school early every single morning to get a little extra help in reading, and now she is excelling in reading and math, so she's a hard worker. I didn't choose you because you are a calm in the storm in an elementary building, you can go a week before Christmas. And, and it's not because you're just this, you're an amazing listener, you love to come to school, you love to learn, you're artistic, you got your back walkover, backhand walkover recently, what is it called? Back walkover, she's a lot of two. I chose her because of the first grade buddy. This year, Mrs. Aipax, she's a first grade teacher at Linden Elementary, and she asked me if I would be interested in having my third graders meet with her first graders once a month and read, so we traveled back and forth, and before our first meeting, Mrs. Aipax asked me to handpick a student. See, Mrs. Aipax had a special student who was a very reluctant reader, he was very nervous and very anxious, and he needed a third grade leader who was calm and patient and encouraging and helpful, and Victoria was, hands on, the first kid I thought of, and she delivered. She did great. First of all, first grade readers reading with third grade readers is just the most precious thing you will ever see, it's adorable, but watching Victoria just by being herself, encouraging her buddy, helping them feel comfortable enough to read with her, and just to open up and blossom with a stranger, if you will, was why I chose you to be the Hyde Elementary Student of the Month. So, much like Mr. Bennett said, these kiddos, they just remind us of our why, and it's not about academics, it's about these kind-hearted kids, and you make my day better every single day just by showing up, so thank you, and congratulations. So, good job. Sorry, I knew I would forget, I knew I would forget. I, we made this for you this morning, you weren't quite there, and the friends in the classroom, we brainstormed words that describe Victoria. Generous, fearless, friendly, kind, clever, bright, helpful, cheerful, trustworthy, courageous, sweet, respectful, and responsible. So that is what all of your friends in third grade have to say about you, my dear. Okay, now I'm done.
Congratulations, Victoria, and thank you so much for being such a great student leader, and what a cool thing to have from your classmates, like a word. Bubble cloud, whatever they call it, yes, with all of your wonderful attributes, that is amazing. All right, we will move along to Linden Elementary, and I think Mrs. Jocelyn is here to present the Student of the Month.
All right, we, our minister is out right now, so it's up to me. I'd like to present her, I have to come to her, I keep teaching her that she has to give a big speech so I can be up there. You don't have to give a speech, I promise you. I do have some goodies for you here. Like Mrs. Rucker, I have a wonderful group this year. There was some, the group had a reputation, but I am very happy with the group, I got they, how do I say it? They were gonna be hard this year, but they delighted me in that they make my job fun and easy this year. I mean, we have our moments, don't we? But they, they're great, they're a great group, I am so thrilled. So it was kind of hard to pick, and I told the kids, I'm like, I have to pick someone, and it was really hard, but we have one more meeting we will be presenting, so I'm always looking anyway I can get them to, you know, check. Miranda, I've known her for years because I did teach her older sister who's a fifth grader, so I've seen Miranda over the years, so I've gotten to know her outside of the classroom. That's not why she was chosen, though. I haven't made some notes because I've learned the part of my, my brain kind of freezes up when I'm up here in front of others, so I have to keep a list now. So, Miranda, even before she was a student in my classroom, has always been willing to help. She'd come and help before school, can help you with anything that's troubling, can I help you? So she'd be there because her mom does guest teach in our building, too, and works there as well, so I've seen her, she's always willing to help even from when she was first second, as long as I've known her. She wants to be a teacher, I think she told me? Maybe not, I'm pretty much surprised. She could be a teacher, I've seen her be a teacher already, when I put her with partners, one day, I think I told her mom about this already, it was super cute, we were doing science activity, they were reading a book together, she's holding the book like a teacher with her friend and pointing about what they were supposed to do, and she's taking notes, and she was doing the job of a teacher, so she is a true leader, teacher, anyone I can put her with, she does a great job, just explaining very well, encouraging, too, because I saw her doing the teacher, like, good job, and you know, yeah, but this year, she was just doing the, the school role. She is very determined, she also, outside of school, plays football. She is one of the few females that play football, so she is fierce, is another word to describe her. So she played her first football season this year, and now she's on to wrestling. So she's gonna be supporting wrestling this year, so I'm sure you'll hear a lot more about what we're gonna do there. She was student, not student of the, the reading height, paralimbial leader, weekend, reading leader, what she wants to, what she likes to do for fun is math. When she goes home from school, she likes to do math, and what she does for fun is math, and she just wants to do math all the time. So she's very bright, I told her, that's my challenge now, when you're this bright, how can I grow you? But we're working on ways to do that. She's very determined, I have no doubt that, you know, with all the math she's doing, that she's gonna continue to soar academically and outside. She's just a great all-around student, I think her crowd, I'm lucky that I got another family member in my class, I've taught a few of them, so keep soaring, and you don't have to give a speech.
Congratulations, would you like to give a speech?
No.
Oh, all right, I was gonna say, you had some plan to say, you can say it, girl. Congratulations, and I was just thinking, I might need to borrow you for a day to come remind my classroom of engineering students how much fun math is, because they gotta think otherwise sometimes, so, very good, keep up the good work, kiddo. All right, last but certainly not least, we have Central Elementary here, and Mrs. Morford is here, and Mrs. Kirkins, I believe, to present the Student of the Month.
Good evening, thank you for coming tonight. We would like to, Mrs. Kirkins has some great words to share with us about Leila Badoszinski, a fabulous fifth grader at Central.
Good evening, I would like to introduce you to Leila Badoszinski. Did I say it correctly?
All right, she's got a ton of different names.
I see a lot. So, Kayla was chosen by Mr. Sun and I because you are very kind, you are very compassionate, you have a heart of gold, you work well with others, you share all of your ideas, you make it, you know, big fair share of groups, and you work well in a group, you pull your fair share of the weight, you are a very hard worker. We are very honored to be your teachers in fifth grade. Kayla is a reader, she gets a big old cherry pie. The bigger the book, the better, way to go, girl, and she's become an excellent writer. She, she could write when she came into fifth grade, but her writing skills have improved, and she just writes, so there's show, not towel, in she goes with Taller's three, she shows it through her word choice and her creativity and her figurative language, and Mr. Sun and I are very proud of you, thank you.
Congratulations, Leila, and I see you two got the Christmas sweater on, all. Well, congratulations to all the Students of the Month, and I want to just also recognize parents and family members that are here, because obviously, students are a big part of who they are because of all of you, so thank you for supporting them, and also the teachers that are here presenting Students of the Month. I always think that's really special, the teachers take time out of their evening to come and do this, and I couldn't help but notice, like, each and every Student of the Month this time just was like looking at their teacher when they were talking about them, and it's just sweet to see, so teachers, you are role models for these students, and they are partly who they are because of you two, so thank you for being here and for sharing your sore leaders as well along with the students, so thank you very much. All right, we have another special group to recognize this evening, our Linden High School Esports Team, state champions, are in the house, if you'd like to come forward, and there's one last name here that's gonna get me, so I'm just gonna go with Aiden, Alex, Michael, and Stone. If you are here, please join Mrs. Sinclair.
Do you have those Street Fighter Lunge, or do you have that separate? Pardon? So, Street Fighter team, do you have that separate? Yeah, we have some other people that came to help.
That's okay, I'll just.
So, as Miss Love mentioned, special recognition for our esports team, our esports program. On behalf of Linden Community Schools, I'd like to recognize our esports program for their exceptional skill, teamwork, and dedication. The program's success has brought pride and honor to Linden High School, Linden Middle School, Linden Community Schools, and our entire community. For the 2024 season, the team of Thomas Love, Aiden Card, Noah Riley, Aiden DeShone, and Spencer Shelton took home honors as Eastern Regional Semi-Finalists in Street Fighter VI. Are they here? Oh, okay, yeah, yep. So again, congratulations to the team, Eastern Regional Semi-Finalists. Then we have the team of Aiden Walker, Alex Calphatus, Michael McGill, and Stone Goody earned elite status as Michigan High School Esports League State Champions in the game of Apex. So again, congratulations, what a wonderful honor and what a wonderful run you guys had. And these two individuals, I don't believe are here because they're at the band concert, but we'd also like to honor and recognize Noah Caldwell and Leo Keith, who are recognized through the Michigan High School Esports League as All-State Players for Overwatch. So again, congratulations to those individuals as well as our program in general. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Sinclair for a minute.
So I just want to say thank you, on behalf of my team and players, I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to the Board for recognizing this great accomplishment. Thank you for your unwavering support over the years. As we celebrate the fifth state title for the team tonight, it's hard to believe it just five years ago, our esports team again. Thank you, Russ, for your vision to start esports and getting me involved back then, and for your continued support. Thank you, Chris Hart, Horstley, and the school board for providing our players with equipment, ensuring we have the technical support needed to compete. Thanks to Greg Godes for working with the team to ensure we have a great space to compete in. And then Darren, Mike, and Pete for constant support and encouragement, and our parents for the time, energy, and commitment to our players. Of course, a huge thank you to our players, whose dedication, hard work, and positive attitudes have made this all possible. Over these five years, I've watched many of our students develop confidence, teamwork, and become leaders for our team and beyond. I hear often from other coaches about our players' strong character, good sportsmanship. I'm so proud of my team and players, past and present. This sport has provided another outlet for our students to excel and become connected with a thriving community. It would be possible without all of your support. So once again, thank you for this honor and support, and we look forward to a great future for our Linden Esports Team, and once again, thank you, Mr. Maker, for all your kind words and your support over these years.
Congratulations, guys, and I know, I recognize at least one alumni there, so there may be more than one, but that also means that you're still mentoring these other players, and thank you for that, that means a lot. And then also, for those that are interested in sticking out the full three-and-a-half-hour board meeting tonight, we do have an action item this evening of hopefully approving a board resolution in support of the esports program here at Linden High School.
We do have one here that is kind of like an assistant coach volunteer, just kind, and has helped out the team, so I remember second graduates that has helped do that.
Perfect, that's amazing, thank you very much. All right, we have one more recognition this evening, well, actually, two, but we have our board member recognition, and we have two outgoing board members, Mr. Reiner and Mr. Maker, so Mr. Sosowski and I would like to take a minute to recognize them. Mr. Sosowski, you want to stay here? I'm like, no, we'll go to the podium, I have everyone else. You get your minute at the podium. You got it?
Sure.
All right, first this evening, we'll recognize Mr. Reiner, John, thank you for your time and contributions during your time on the board. Although your tenure has been brief, your efforts have been greatly appreciated, and we are grateful for the impact that you've made, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And I should probably mention as well, so, Mr. Reiner was an appointed board member since about May for Mrs. Shayna's seat, when she resigned from the board a little bit early in her term, so I, also, I guess we'll just publicly mention a thank you to Mrs. Shayna as well for her time on the board this evening as well, and all of these board members, including Mrs. Shayna, were also recognized at the county school board meeting and holiday dinner last week as well, so. All right, up next, Mr. Maker.
Come on, just like the Student of the Month. You don't have to look glowingly at me while I'm commenting. On behalf of the entire school community, I would like to express our deepest gratitude for your outstanding service and dedication to our schools over the years, sixteen years. Your commitment and leadership have made a lasting impact on the lives of countless students, teachers, and families. Throughout your tenure, you have consistently exemplified what it means to serve with integrity, vision, and passion. Your unwavering support has not only helped shape the direction of our schools, but also fostered an environment where students can thrive and achieve their fullest potential. We have been truly fortunate to have had you as part of the team, and your contributions will continue to resonate for many years to come. Thank you, on behalf of all of us, for your tireless work, your dedication, and for always putting the needs of our community first. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and will forever be grateful for your invaluable service. On a personal note, I just want to take a moment to thank you, Scott, heartfelt gratitude for your mentorship and support that you have given me over the years and my time on the board. Your guidance has made a significant difference in both my personal and professional growth. You've always been there with valuable advice, encouragement, wisdom, and I truly appreciate you for helping me navigate challenges with confidence and in my role both outside and on the board. You've become not just a board colleague, but also a friend, and your impact has been immeasurable. I appreciate you very much, and I will definitely miss sitting next to you at the board table. I was gonna say, I'd also like to mention that I didn't get all the pee pee out of it. Some of us can't hold this together. Would you like to say anything else, Mr. Maker? Oh, oh, yes, that's right, I almost forgot. It's Mr. Sosowski's turn to go, we can now.
No, hopefully, yeah, all right. Mr. Maker, so Scott Maker, he's a father, a husband, a military man, sports announcer... Uh, Mr. Maker, so Scott Maker is a father, a husband, a military man, sports announcer, mentor, a community member, and an individual who has spent the last sixteen years making an impact on Linden Community Schools. During Scott's tenure as a trustee, board vice president, and president, Linden Community Schools has improved student success and has created a centerpiece for K-12 education. Scott's time as a board member has been about students and creating opportunities. Without Scott's dedication, time, and efforts, Linden Community Schools would not be in the place it is today, so Scott, thank you. Many years ago, Scott and former superintendent Ed Cleo created an opportunity to recognize individuals who have gone above and beyond to make Linden a special place. The evil coin was developed based on the military challenge point given to soldiers who performed exceptional service. Scott, it is a great honor to present to you your evil coin, recognizing you and your contributions toward the success of Linden Community Schools and making Linden such a special place to educate our students and our families. Congratulations and thank you.
I just, I just wanted to say one last thing, and, uh, I think you both hit on it a little bit, is the pride in, in what Linden is today. A friend of mine was visiting from Indianapolis back a few months ago, and I brought him here to the main campus, and he was just awestruck. Now, this is someone who comes from a major metropolitan area with some, some pretty high standing, you know, school, uh, programs, and he was just floored by what Linden has got. Facility-wise, and I, I've shared with him about our, our, you know, our students, our, our performance, you know, just Linden, top to bottom, and he was just so impressed. So, um, if there's anything that I leave, uh, my time on the board with, it's that, you know, I've, I've done my part to leave it better than I found it, um, and it wasn't, you know, an individual effort. Like I said earlier, you know, twenty other board members have served with me, um, these folks here, two superintendents, a lot of staff. Once again, I see places that I know love, you know, have taught my own kids and my niece, um, and I just think Linden is the best place. It's, it's why I came here back in 2001 with my family. I just think, uh, and, and wish all luck to Tabitha Ramberg and Katie Odell, who will be stepping into the seats, uh, beginning of next year, uh, and I hope they find that they have this great experience. Uh, it's, it's not all great, you know, there are some really challenging times, uh, there's some times you really get, get down, you can get down on yourself, you can question what you're doing, but you've always got to pivot back, look at what the, the mission is, and it's teaching kids, giving them an opportunity, and creating a place where teachers want to work and, and do their best for our kids. So, thanks, everybody, I appreciate you so much.
Sorry, I didn't want to take care of the spotlight away from Scott. He is a great, um, person for the board and the community, so, um, I also wanted to say thank you to the board for inviting me to be a part of this, and for the students, and this is really a great school, community, everything, um, even though we're short, it was very appreciative, so thank you, guys, all.
Thank you.
Well, there's like one sad tissue left in here, if anybody needs it. And also, as Mr. Maker said, if we ever start feeling down on ourselves, then that's when you just get off social media, and then you feel better.
That's correct.
Right. All right, well, the very, the very best part of the board meeting has now concluded for this evening, however, we do have some official board business yet to, um, to take care of before we, um, end for holiday break. So at this point, we will pause just for a brief moment. Students, um, families, uh, teachers that are here for student recognition, you may exit quietly if you need to. Students who are here for class have to stay a little longer. And we will get an administrative update from Mr. Vadas on our bond update, so if anybody's interested in hearing that, you might want to stick it out. But thank you all for being here this evening and, uh, celebrating all of our recognitions with us. All right, Mr. Vadas is ready to roll and has other places to be this evening as well, so we will go ahead and turn things over to you, Brad.
Good evening. Uh, just gonna run through a brief update, uh, on the bond program.
You want to bring your mic on? Thanks.
Sorry about that, I'm gonna do a brief update on, on the current condition of the, of the bond. Um, the last update I did, I believe, was in September, and so they kind of run through each of the, each of the aspects of the bond and where we're at today. Um, at Linden Elementary School, really, the, there's no recent changes, where, uh, as I discussed last time, the fire marshal has been required to put a few more, uh, devices in the building for the firearm, we're still waiting on a contractor, he's tied up on a metal project now to get back in going to do that work. Um, we're hoping that will happen relatively shortly, and then we can have the fire marshal back to, to kind of complete his, uh, his approval of that project. As I said before, we got approval, there was just some paperwork there, it was on the state, state's part, that kind of led to us going back to that building for a second time. Uh, moving on to the high school, uh, this project, uh, basically is wrapped up. Um, when I spoke last time, we had a similar situation in this building where the fire marshal had to come back and do some reinspection, uh, there were a few devices that he wanted us to install in this building, and we've done that, uh, he gave us his blessing on December the third, uh, so in, in essence, this building is complete from all the state's perspective. Uh, we still do have a few, uh, trades that are working in the building, doing final touch-ups on things, labeling electrical panels, um, completing some of the van and music storage systems that we have. We're doing air-water balancing and air-track systems still. We're waiting on a couple of parts for the doorwriting system. Uh, it doesn't impact the function, but it just impacts the ability to do some of the controls from various, uh, remote locations within the space. Those parts have been on back order, and it seems like each month they get another month down the road. Uh, at this point, they're telling us January fifteenth, uh, those parts should become available when they're coming to the installation. The Hall of Fame reconstruction, we're kind of underway in that, we've got the case work, we've got the storage, you know, now it's just gonna be the manner of finishing that system up. Uh, and the visual trophy case and our, you know, trophy cases that are all in the main lobby, um, also are down there. Working with our ITAC, we've been working with our ITAC, uh, programmer, um, since really August, trying to get the building, uh, fine-tuned, and it's been very challenging. But we're making progress every day, we've got a couple of different people that we're working with, we're trying to kind of fine-tune all these systems and make sure that they're sustainable for the next, for the next fifteen years. Uh, Hyatt Elementary, the ECC project, the construction, uh, is going very well. Uh, in my weekly reports, I try to kind of, you know, list some of the challenges that we've had, um, and most of those things have been sorted out at this point. Uh, we still consider the project to be on schedule. Uh, I, we have meetings every other week with our bond committee to, to discuss construction and where we're at. Uh, we really feel like we're at a point now where most of the aid conditions and things that we uncovered, discovered as we were doing demolition and some of those work, we're kind of beyond that, so hopefully, most of our trade orders and things that are, you know, that were unforeseen have kind of come and went, and at this point, we're really just finishing the go-out. All the stud walls are done, we're doing drywall, all the utilities in the walls, electrical plumbing are complete, um, and at this point, it's not, we're not truly to the point of finishes, but we're getting to the point where that's kind of where we're at, they're gonna be taping drywall and doing most of the things. Uh, later, I will present, um, information regarding to the playground, I talked about that last time, the site work, uh, that we're doing at that building will happen this summer. Uh, we had not been offered the playground work, uh, during the last meeting, we have since done that, we will make a recommendation tonight to the board to approve a contractor for the playground work. Um, and again, uh, it's still intended that the staff from Argentine and the students will transition into that building next fall, uh, in August when we come back into session. So, this next slide is really true for Hyatt Elementary School, the remainder of the building, Central Elementary School, and the middle school, the remainder of the bond work that we have slated. So we received, uh, several days of proposals or quotes from each of the contractors on December the twelfth. Um, post-bid interviews have been ongoing, Martin Mallow is still in the process of, of sorting through all, uh, those post-bid interviews, making sure contractors were inclusive, you know, sometimes the low bidder does not necessarily turn out to be the low bidder because they weren't, they didn't include everything or something was overlooked or something like that, so Sam and his team are going through, making sure that they, uh, work with these contractors, and contractors fully understand what the intent was, what their scope was, uh, before we come to the board with making any kind of award for contract. Uh, we did have, uh, good, better turnout, we had one category, and you may remember, um, when we did the high school, uh, the drywall studs and ceilings, uh, we had one contractor that bid, and they're a local contractor out of Flint, and it's because the contractors that are in the surrounding areas don't necessarily like to bid against Flint contractor, Flint contractors because their pay scales and such, and whether it be Pan Am or Detroit or Lansing or Saginaw are greater. Um, and we found that with the high school, when we had that same dilemma, uh, with these three buildings, we had one bidder that bid on one category. All of the other categories, we had a minimum of three. Um, glass and glazing, we had four contractors that bid, painting, we had six contractors that bid, plumbing, we had four mechanical contractors, there were three and four electrical contractors. So I would say that the, the large scope and some of the expensive, um, areas, we had good coverage, uh, you know, we would hope that we would get at least a couple in every, but it, it didn't pan out, it didn't pan out last time, so, um, we'll work through that, make sure that the number that, you know, falls within, uh, you know, the, the budget where we feel it should, and, and then we'll make a recommendation to the board, um, probably for some of the contractors in the first meeting in January, and then probably the se- the second meeting in January will come back and award the remainder of those, kind of, we might get a couple of them out of the way, that have some long lead items, such as mechanical equipment, some electrical gear that we might need, so we'll be back in January twice, most likely to have the board, uh, approve contracts. Um, so again, Hyatt, the, the intent there is to work starting about February, uh, we start to, to do some of the interior work, really to, for the new, uh, secure entry and the new office location. We've been planning all along, along that we would be moving a classroom, uh, the staff are aware of that, so we will be moving, uh, the person that's in the room that, that's gonna become the office house, if they have a plan for that, same at Central. Um, so we'll begin in February, the intent would be to try and have those spaces ready to go, so we're not delaying, you know, the administrative staff to be able to get back into that building to come early August, like we typically do when they return. Uh, so at the two buildings, uh, the two elementary buildings will begin construction sometime in February, and actually, we will go into the fall of 2025 before we get everything completely wrapped up. And part of that is because of the phasing that we need to do, uh, to be able to complete some areas before we move on, and make sure that we can have all of the classrooms and those spaces ready to go for the start of the school year in August. The middle school, um, is somewhat different. Uh, it, the project was bid out, the sculpt that we chose to do in that building was bid out, um, that work will occur this summer, probably some of it through the school year, and then the final, uh, bit of work is gonna happen in the summer of 2026. So we're still on track, you know, the intent was to wrap the bond up by 2026, we might be a little bit ahead, ahead of schedule, um, but we're at least on schedule, the summer of 26, there will be a minimal amount of work that we need to do, um, to wrap up kind of the, the completion of, of the bond program. The other project that, um, we haven't had any discussions about is, uh, Argentine Elementary School as it stands now, um, in the bond application, uh, and what the intent, uh, during the, the bond planning was that the building would be demo, uh, as part of this. So we have $250,000, $210,000 in the, in the bond program for the demolition of Argentine Elementary School. We need to have some discussions, obviously, of, you know, there are other, uh, other options, is that the best plan? We have been approached, and there's been discussions with other municipalities, governmental agencies, I know we've talked to the ISD, so there, you know, to see if there's other uses for the building, or what can we do with that space, um, but before too long, we need to really make a determination of what's, what's, what's in the best interest of Linden schools. Um, you know, do we sell the facility and the property as is? Do we demolish the building and, and sell the vacant land? You know, for reference, I, we have, we did take a look at kind of the value of the building as it stands, very unofficial, we had somebody look at that, and, you know, their market analysis was kind of in the mid-four hundreds, if we were to do nothing, sell the building, uh, there's probably more value, honestly, in demoing the building and selling the land, it is layfront property. The property that's next to it, the 1.7 acres, which is really the property just to the west, is, has been on the market, uh, for quite, quite a while, with asking price of $225,000. So again, there is the potential to sale, you know, to sell it, lease it, transfer it, do something with, to another agency. Um, we did discuss, uh, with the architect, uh, two, about a month ago, two meetings ago, uh, what does it look like if we were, if we do mothbowl the building, you know, what does that look like? And under state law, if we are out, if it is not a school building for twenty-four months, um, if we don't occupy and use it as K-12 or pre-K-12 for twenty-four months, then after that, the entire building would have to be brought up to today's level, so the building would have to go through a, a complete transformation to be able to reopen as a school building. So that's probably not something we would want to entertain, um, you know, I think the decision probably needs to be expedited. I don't think we want to get into the, uh, situation where we're trying to maintain the building, um, you know, we're gonna have utility costs and all the things that go along with trying to keep that building just sitting there vacant. Um, so I think over the next short while, Russ and I plan to have some discussions, further discussions, and then probably bring back, apply it to the board and get input from the board as to what you think the best approach might be. Any questions?
Uh, thank you very much for the update. Are there any quick comments or questions here, Mr. Vadas? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Um, regards to Argentine, has there been any discussion with the, uh, local township for the, they would have an interest in that building, consolidate their operations, now they have an issue with their current, uh, township building, malls, landlocked, and the fire department's kind of problematic problem, and then the police department's separate offsite. Do they have any interest in that facility, Dan?
We had discussions with the, uh, previous, um, supervisor. I talked to the new supervisor yesterday, we intend to meet with him. He was brought to speed on some of the discussions and some of the interests that the previous administration had discussed with us. I think at first they were extremely excited, I think as, the more they looked into it, it was more concerned about whether they had the proper funding to really be able to add on to the facility, and how is the fire trucks and all those, I don't want to speak for them, they have a completely new, you know, uh, supervisor and, and board members and what have you. We're going to meet with Bob Hope just to see if that is something that they would be interested in, um, and if something like that would work out.
Yeah, to me, that's the best option that I've heard so far, because this amount of money you're talking about is incredibly low. I'm disappointed that that's all you think that project's worth, that given the cost, and that we had to contribute $250,000 to make the site, similar to what happened downtown, and then turn around and basically wash our hands and make very little money in the end, that doesn't seem like a good idea to me, so I, I really hope we can come up with a, a win-win for the community, and that would be for the township to, it's a very nice building, I think it could fit a lot of their needs, maybe not the fire department immediately, maybe that's a down-the-road thing, but maybe it's a number thing, the fire department, I don't think the fire department has to be attached to that building. Uh, I think police and, uh, community center, uh, for the township, you know, I think those are better options, so I really hope that that option gets fully vetted before we make a decision. Thank you, Dan.
No, we, we definitely plan to work that through, and I think to your concerns, you know, the net difference between us spending $250,000 to demo and sell land, you know, is probably a wash, I mean, it, to sell the building for, for 400, to sell the property for 600 after you spent 250, you know, it, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but long-term, having a building sit there vacant without a use, and, you know, having to maintain it, keep the utilities up, doesn't make sense either. You know, it was the intent, you know, all along, that we- You know, it was the intent, you know, all along that we would demo the building. Again, that doesn't have to necessarily be the plan, but we will bring something back once we have discussions. We were even hopeful that maybe the ISD would have a need for, for some of their programs down here in southern part of the county, and that didn't seem to pan out. So we'll let you know how that goes, but, you know, if the board has input and they want to get with us, that would be great, too. You know, we just know that the timeline, you know, we're going to move all that building in August, and then the time starts, you know, clock starts ticking at that point. And how long do we, do we just, you know, get the game before we make the decision, well, a lot of it? I would think, you know, latest would be probably summer of 2026. We really want to either have that building demoed and property for sale or have moved on from it at that point. While we still have our architects on staff and we still have Barton Mallow here, you know, to work through that whole entire process.
Yeah, my thought process on that is that because you did mention that it's lakefront property, it's a small lake there, but lakefront nonetheless, that I can't believe there's not going to be some developer that would just come in and swoop that up in the ends and just make a killing on that. And I just don't want to see that happen. Thank you.
One thing I guess I could, a quick go back to when I talked about this, was kind of about our budget, overall budget, where we're at with the projects that are upcoming. And I will say that our business office in conjunction with Barton Mallow has been, and have not audited, series one and two, kind of see where we're up, you know, where we're at to date. We feel we're in a good position moving forward. We will have more concise, clear information from the board before we ask you to put those contracts in January. But as it stands right now, knock on wood, you know, we have managed this program well with the help of Barton Mallow, and moving forward, we should be in a pretty good position. You know, even with all the challenges and struggles that we've had with finances and costs along the way, we still feel like we're in a pretty good position as we stand around here today.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Lott. I just want to say briefly, as I'm kind of being reflective in this mode at the end of the year, that as we're sitting in this beautiful building, I still, I still been getting used to walking into this building and seeing what it is today compared to what it used to be. I can barely sit in here and imagine what it used to look like. So I'm just really appreciating everything that, you know, that you, Mr. Vides, and Mr. Esser have done to get us so far along in the project and has been able to spend more time in multiple purpose building and everything. It's really, it's really kind of a miracle that we're as far as we are and it looks as great as it is. So thanks to all the tough decisions you all have made. And I know when we get into some of these tougher discussions around Argentine or whatever, you know, a lot of people, including me, who have had young kids go through there, and a lot of us, you know, it's, it's hard to see it go away, so I'm sure there will be a lot of heartfelt discussion about what happened. But I'm confident that we have the right leaders and the right people with the right intentions that will make the best decision for, for that building to be community. So, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi. Do we have any idea what the fixed operational expenses are if it was vacant?
Oh, I could tell you exactly. I could, yeah, I could. I don't have it with me tonight, but I, that's something to prepare on that for you.
So that would be a run of the town, we'd keep the property, though, obviously, if it's vacant, right?
Yes. I mean, they would be reduced where we're at today because of sewer water, you know, but, you know, heat and those kinds of things, you know, and even, you know, you think you can shut the stuff off and just mothball the building. That thing, you know, is just not true. You know, mold, you'd have issues with mold and everything else, so, you know, I, I, I don't think just deciding to do nothing with it would be the best decision for the district. Long-term, I truly don't. And again, if we're out of it for more than 24 months, you know, you're looking at, you know, a $10 million renovation to be able to take that building and make it usable again. You know, it'd be significant. So I think we really need, you know, chew on that hard and figure out what the best approach is.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, to start with, the negative is that building, I think, you know, if you look around, there's a lot of examples of districts that have closed buildings and sat on them and done whatever. They've just become a target for nefarious activity. Most of them end up being broken into and burned or whatever. So having a plan and looking forward, I commend you for, for looking at a lot, a lot of options. You know, because it is going to be a challenge. Where it's located, the, you know, the nature of the township and what we're, what they're dealing with, and there's just a lot of, I don't know, there's just a lot of question marks from that side as far, as far as that goes. But I think having, having a plan in place moving forward and not laying out it too long is, is your best, best road forward. To echo Mr. Montague's comments, my wife, this is the first time she's seen the building since the renovations have been done, and, you know, everybody that I talked to was just odd by the transformation. Couple student that I saw here one night that graduated, well, alumni that graduated in 2014 when my son came in, he was like, I, I can't believe this is the same building that I went to. You know, you could, you could imagine that you just got teleported into a totally other built, totally new building. You know, so great job to all the members of the team, you know, across the board. And, you know, multi-purpose building as well. Talking to a friend who comes and used the facility as a community member, he's like, you guys have just, you, you've got a diamond. You know, that's, that's really a stellar facility that the district has. And, you know, just carries on with my comments from earlier, but that, you know, we've done a great job here, and you've done a great job, and I commend you for, for all that you've done here in the district. Right? You've done, you've done us a great service.
All right, thank you very much. And thank you also for being here this evening as well.
Please be, Ms. Lott.
Oh, sorry.
Got one more quick thought. In regards to Central and Linden Health, or Hyatt, Hyatt, excuse me, we're losing a classroom. We're going to be able to absorb losing that classroom, is that right?
Yes.
And we've got a spare classroom Sunday.
Hyatt Elementary School will be creating, recreating a classroom.
It doesn't show that. Where's that?
Yeah, well, sure.
Where's that?
Right. It's in the blue section, right in the middle, the left and right. Kind of in the bottom right corner. That's actually a classroom that isn't there now.
Is that the area that's talked about being media center?
Yeah.
But there's not, oh, a new classroom. There you go.
Yeah, bottom right corner is actually a classroom.
Okay, very good. So we don't lose one in Hyatt. Central, we do lose one?
Central, we don't necessarily lose one because they're using one currently for STEM lab, and that we're going to create an area in that core where the office is now, it's going to come to do STEM lab. So it's really a wonderful one.
Wash there.
Not gaining anything, but we're not losing anything.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much. We are at the time of meeting for public comments. Mrs. Keller, are there any public comments this evening? We'll move along then to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes minutes from our work session meeting on December 4, minutes of our closed session meeting on December 4, invoices for the month of November, and the personnel summary sheet, in addition to Mrs. Hanson's MESB attendance at the Winter Institute, including some CBA's that she's willing to take. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of action items this evening. The first being the Hyatt Early Childhood Center Playground Bid Award that Mr. Vides had mentioned during his presentation. So Tabor has had a chance to review the information presented, and so if you have anything additionally you want to add, go ahead, Greg.
I don't, unless there's any questions. As I stated in this, we kind of put it out to, out to the public to bid with a budget in mind and had them each come back to us with what they could offer for that kind of dollar amount. Ultimately, they were all relatively similar. There's a company, Brighton Pentura, who we're recommending, who is the most local. All of the other companies are actually out of Holland. Pentura does quite a bit of work in the area, Brighton Square, Arton, and many new playgrounds at the ISD. He really took, had the best approach, a great person, wants to work with the district for many years to come, gave us a lot of options. I, I'll say that, you know, that 304 number is a not-to-exceed because he did give us a couple of options where we could do cost reductions. If the main structure, they decided they wanted to go with something different. I think after talking with him and looking at stuff, they may choose to, to stick with the basic zone. But before we get to the ordering process, we'll figure that out, and it could be reduced from where we're at. So he did offer a couple of options, and one of the most fairly significant cost reduction, I think in the $30,000 range, if they chose to go with a more kind of a classic structure that you see on a playground rather than kind of what was, what he envisioned for a pre-K type playground.
All right, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the Hyatt Early Childhood Center Playground Bid Award as presented. Do I have a motion?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
We had $50,000 of bond money is all for playground work district-wide. And I think the approach originally, when we first started looking at the design and moving the early childhood centers, we already had an elementary playground right there adjacent to it. The more we talked and started looking at the design, meeting with the staff, it really made more sense to create a new playground that was specific for the students of Argentine, the early childhood center. So no, there wasn't money in there for this scope to be able to pay for a new playground, and it was really never intended to build a completely new playground. The thought was we would, you know, we would kind of combine use of the playground that's already in place. But as we went through this, it made a lot more sense to create one that was adjacent to the area where they are fenced and, you know, something that's easy for them to access, control their population of kids rather than trying to be mixed in with the bunch that are already at Hyatt.
Makes sense?
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Looking back at the earlier bond update, the physical diagram of Hyatt's reconfiguration, the site plan, I'll say, for Hyatt, it shows the playground, the location of it. And that area next to it, further to the left, I guess I'll say, further to the west, that's the area that's being reserved for future expansion?
Correct. It'll be just a grassy area and all that that we'll utilize, but in, it's, the footprint of that is that honestly fit in addition that we shared with the board long ago. If that program takes off, the intent would be to add on to that building to absorb, you know, the additional students, so.
And, and part of that, we approved that money for the new parking lot?
Yeah, we did.
That's what I thought you did.
Yeah, quite some time ago.
Yeah. So if people envision what that's going to mean, it's basically it'll push the parking drive right out near Waldorf.
Correct.
Which is quite a substantial difference, distance.
Yes.
So really.
We wanted to maximize as much space as we possibly could for future expansion of that program.
Yeah, that's good because that's been kind of wasted space right there, as it says right now.
Yeah, all the other site work is already been approved and awarded.
Yep. Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in support to approve the Hyatt Early Childhood Center Playground Bid Award as presented. All those in favor? Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Greg, for being here as well for that. Up next is our esports recognition resolution. As earlier indicated during student recognitions, our esports program has had a lot of accolades this season with several accomplishments, including a state championship. So we are looking to make a resolution to just support our esports team on behalf of Linden Community Schools. And it is the administrative recommendation to approve the MHSEL Board Resolution, which is the Michigan High School Esports League Board Resolution. Oh, okay, got that. So I need a motion and support to approve the board resolution as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. So any comments, questions? I know we've had a chance to review this resolution. Mr. Maker?
Yeah, I, I think this is incredible. And I'm really proud of, that she came on board with it and what she's done as the staff advisor. Sherry St. Clair has really, you know, taken us on, and I think, I mean, it's really the kids, but without that, without her leadership and, you know, kind of a vision and her efforts to coordinate and get support for the program and all she's done. You know, I don't think she gets nearly enough recognition or compensation for, for what she puts into it because it really doesn't make a difference for kids as an alternative. You know, great for kids that are really good athletes, and some of these kids are good athletes, but they're into esports, too. But it's just another option for, for kids to excel and be part of their school and their community and, and to be out there competitive and, and doing their thing. So this is great, and I'm, I'm really proud of, of all the kids over the last five years and where they're at and where they've come.
And also, Mr. Montague?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Ms. Lott. I just had, I think, most people know that my son Max was, was part of the four-time champion esports team for Rocket League. And, you know, I'll tell anyone that listened, he got real scholarship offers, you know, at least one that I remember was over $10,000 for esports. And he ended up going to Michigan State, and they have probably, I think, the best college team in Michigan, so he wasn't able to make the state team, but he's staying in touch with the esports coach from Michigan State. It looks like he's going to probably try out and play for the B-team next year, but it's, it's a full program. It's really exciting to go to these matches and watch. Probably hard to imagine that you could sit in a gymnasium and watch that big screen, kids playing video games, and it'd be exciting, but it really is. And I, I almost could see it be this big boom, like I think about whenever they figured out how to televise poker like 20 years ago, and it got really exciting there for a minute. There was this boom. I could see something similar happen for esports, especially as this generation of, of young people gets older and older, and then, you know, there, there's, there's a couple of schools that have kind of pioneered having the, you know, the smoke come out and the fire and the lights and everything, and it's, it's pretty cool. You know, my wife and I get really excited watching, so, yeah. To your point, Mr. Maker, Miss St. Clair is really a pioneer, and because of all the success Linden has had, she shared that a lot of other schools have come to her to try to see what our secret sauce is and how they can really grab this new group of students and get them involved. So it's pretty exciting to be pioneers of it. So, yeah, thanks.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Yeah, esports, esports seems to be a place in the future. It's now an end of the future. I think we're lucky here to have good leadership and student, interested students. Do we have any idea around the state, how many teams, or schools have teams represented, school district-wise?
I could try to look into that. The, the, the two basic major leagues, if you will. One, both of them, the, uh, MHSEL and the I, MIHSEL. So there's two, two major leagues of esports in the state of Michigan. I, I can ask. I know Miss St. Clair probably has all that information.
Okay, very good. I'm just curious because, I'm just wondering, at what point do we recognize it more as a district? I mean, this is part of the resolution here, but do we have like, you know, state, obviously, we have a state champion team in the past here, and to me, state champions always need to be remembered. It helps school to break them out of what it's in, whether it's in marching band or academics or athletics. But this is a new venture here that I think we need to have a place for them somewhere.
And honestly, Mr. Murphy, I believe that is in the works with the construction. You know, we kind of did put a little bit of hold on that, even at last, just because of everything going on. But, yeah, it's, I would agree.
We never need to forget the state champions.
Thank you. And just out of side note to everybody, you do have a middle school program now as well for esports.
Yeah, and I'll kind of echo what Mr. Montague mentioned as well. I work at Kettering University, and we have one varsity club sport, and it's esports. And we actually have an entire director dedicated to that program because it's so huge now. We have students trying out and not getting accepted on the team straight away and scholarships and such as well. So it's becoming really big. And I'm going to eat my words here. I was determined not to read this resolution because resolutions are weird. They're weird. I'll tell you that right now. But there's a couple of you still in the room. I see at least one that's here, and I feel like you've earned this. So here goes the weirdness. So our board resolution this evening, whereas the Linden High School esports team has demonstrated exceptional skill, teamwork, and dedication by winning the state championship for Apex, a highly competitive esports game. Whereas the team's success has brought great pride and honor to Linden High School, Linden Community Schools, and the entire community, therefore be it. Whereas the team members have shown exemplary sportsmanship and professionalism throughout their championship season, setting an outstanding example for their peers and the broader community. Resolve that the Linden High School's Board of Education recognizes the Linden High School esports team for their remarkable achievement as state champions of Apex. And be it further resolved that the board extends its sincere congratulations to the team members, their coaches, and all those who supported them throughout their championship season. And be it further resolved that the board further recognizes the value of esports programs And be it further resolved that the board further recognizes the value of esports programs in providing students with opportunities to develop valuable skills such as communication, teamwork, and critical thinking, and in promoting a sense of community and camaraderie among students with diverse interests backgrounds. Be it further resolved that the board encourages continued support for esports programs at Linden High School and throughout the district as they provide valuable opportunities for students to excel and achieve success both inside and outside the classroom. Well, it says approved, but soon to be approved this eighteenth day of December twenty twenty-four by the Linden Community Schools Board of Education. There you go. Further have it. So with a motion and support for this resolution, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And congratulations again to our esports team. And Mr. Selsky can be proud of you later, so I'm like, I cannot read that out loud, that's just a very weird thing to read. Resolutions are just weird anyway, but basically what it means is we're really proud of you and we support you, so great job. All right. We, uh, do have one discussion item this evening, and that is our Board of Education self-evaluation process. Um, so a few years ago, um, when I became board president, I kind of wanted to re, um, I guess, bring back to the board the idea of doing a little self-evaluation. I know we always try to do reflection and evaluation as we go through our day-to-day activities. Um, but, you know, as a school district, you know, students are evaluated, teachers are evaluated, other staff is evaluated, the administrators are evaluated, the superintendents evaluated. In a way, the board is evaluated when, when elections roll around, but it's also important, I feel, to be reflective and do self-evaluation. So we, we had determined a process a few years ago as a board, um, to kind of work through this, um, at the last board meeting of the calendar year every year. Um, so thank you to those that participated in this. I know, um, you have access to the responses of our board. We had six board members respond, um, and then also since then, uh, Mr. Selsky, I asked Mr. Selsky to also complete this um, with, from his lens on how we are doing as a board, working with him. And we had, um, we did not have time to meet person, but we met over the phone and kind of had a little discussion on it. So, um, in general, he was very much in alignment with, um, you know, the comments that you all made as well. So I don't know if anyone has any particular comments that they would like to make or any discussion, um, regarding this?
Yeah, I, uh, doing self-evaluations are always difficult and, um, this one probably was the most difficult for me because I, I know that it's, it's kind of capturing, uh, a snapshot, uh, of yourself right now and then how does that change, you know, transmit into the future? Well, I'm not gonna be here in the future. So that was, that was, I was, I felt a little bit of a quandary and I apologize for, for, not that I didn't dip a lot of thought, but it was very difficult for me to come up with any narrative, um, input, uh, or to give you some guidance. Uh, I just think it's, it's always good to reflect, um, you know, just as we do an evaluation of, of Russ, uh, every year. And I know Russ does a self-evaluation himself and he does, you know, the segue, you do an awesome job of putting that together. I would, I would just say that I feel the board should do something similar. Um, and that's, that's only, my only takeaway is that it's difficult to, to sit down at the end of the year. Um, and, and you do it when you can. Um, and I don't say that any time is the best time because we always have other things going on. This type of year is kind of difficult, uh, uh, so, um, I would look at that. But I think board members should try to capture, uh, from these elements. I think these, these probably aren't gonna change a whole lot, but kind of use, um, a little bit of time throughout the year. Uh, going into meetings, coming out of meetings, going through, uh, various things. Capture some notes that you can go back and then, you know, draft up responses because it would be more, um, poignant. I don't know if that's the right term or not. Um, I also think that, um, this should be shared with the new board members coming in. Um, and, and encourage them to do likewise going forward. I, I think there's a lot of, this would help lead their growth. Um, and I don't know, uh, our, our resident, um, superstar of professional growth, Brooke Hanson. I don't know what, what, if she perceives it to be similar, but I think something like that would be, be good as part of that mentorship for individual board members to help them, not just as a tool for the board as an, as an entirety, so.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, that's a good idea. Of course, the guy in his way out the door is like, I'll write ideas, but no, I think that's, I think it's really good.
Why it's world wide.
Right. No, I think that's a, is a good point, Scott, cause it is kind of hard, you know, at the end to like think about. I think the common themes that I saw in here really, um, were just comments regarding, you know, making sure that we're always keeping, being mindful of the strategic plan, which we generally do a really good job of, but making sure that we're continuing that, um, in all things that we do. Um, the idea of continuing our own professional growth and development. Um, I know, as you mentioned, Mrs. Hanson's been to a lot of, um, trainings this past year. I know other board members, including myself, have done some in the past, but it really does benefit the entire district where we are out, um, not only improving ourselves, but also hearing what's going on around the state. Um, you know, Brooke has gotten involved in some legislative groups to be able to like bring back information to the board. Um, actually, one of the, um, ideas that she brought back that we've done informally, um, for a while, and it was mentioned on here as well as, as an idea. And it's interesting, this is an idea we're, we're putting into place, it's like formal mentorship for new board members. And so, um, that's something we had talked, um, both of Mrs. Ramberg and Mrs. Odell about in our onboarding last week. They were very receptive to the idea. Um, Mr. Montague and Mrs. Hanson have agreed, um, to be their mentors, um, as they come onto the board. So just, you know, another person to, you know, kind of help acclimate them to board business and, and ask questions of. Of course, Mr. Selsky and, and myself, whoever's board president next go around, you know, will be available as well. But, um, I thought that was a really good suggestion. I think that will continue to help us grow both as a board professionally and also just as a group. Um, other ideas that came about were just, you know, more informal board things. It's hard for us as a board for people who don't understand how these types of things work, like based on open meetings act and other rules. We can't just like get together all the time. We can get together as long as we're having a holiday dinner and not talking about, you know, the playground price or anything like that. But that, you know, it's difficult because, you know, we can't just socially gather, um, ve- uh, very easily. But getting together one-to-one, um, and building relationships is really important. That's something else that came, came out of some of these suggestions. And then also just the idea of continuing our own board professional development by way of workshops. Um, you know, some, we've done a few of these in the past, we've got one scheduled for February, um, which is good, uh, in making time for more of that. It's just hard, time goes by fast and, and you gotta get one more meeting on the calendar. But, um, we've done a decent job of doing a couple of those each year, but continue to push ourselves, um, to do even more of that. So that's kind of what I read as takeaways on here. I wonder if others have things they want to add? Yeah, Mr. Montague?
No, I think, Ms. Luck, you covered it and I just wanted to say I appreciate the, you driving this and I think it's a good process. I, I really enjoyed kind of looking at the compilation of all the scores and the comments. And, and I, and I think generally, you know, we're, we're all on the, uh, similar page in a lot of areas. I think we, we kind of seem to have scored similarly in the different categories and, and agree on all the things that you touched on about, you know, maybe building relationships and consensus to the extent that we can within the parameters that we have. But also, uh, certainly focus on further development and, and, uh, yeah, some of the same comment things. But yeah, so thanks for guiding the process and I really enjoyed the transparency and looking back at everybody's score and comments.
Thank you. All right, well, that was just discussion, so we don't need to go. Um, that is our last, um, item this evening. Uh, students, thank you for sitting so patiently with us in what turned out to be a little bit of a lengthy board meeting, but all for good reasons. A couple of notes I wanted to make.
I apologize.
It's all right, good note, it was good. Um, a couple of things I just want to note to students as I was sitting here observing. First off, you guys moved from the back to a seat when people left. That's awesome, that's leadership. You didn't move all the way to the front, that would be like extra credit, but the fact that you moved to a seat, that's amazing. And secondly, this is, can be boring, you were listening whether you wanted to or not, I didn't see a single cell phone. So kudos to your, uh, yourselves and your teacher, and I don't know if you've been threatened not to do that, but I know Mr. Nag is sitting back here. Maybe you can spread the word to your teacher that you were, um, well complimented on your attentiveness at the board meeting this evening, so thank you for that. That was gonna be my idea. I was gonna hand over the gavel to Mr. Maker one more time, cause I'm sure formally I have to close the meeting at seven forty, but go ahead, Scott. That one is yours.